Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for April 11. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
And I believe both Councilmember Kinnear and Wilkerson are absent.
That is correct. Thank you. All right. So we're doing a double briefing session today. First, we're going to go to the April 18th, Advanced Agenda, and then we'll come back to the April 11th agenda. So, Councilman, excuse me, City Administrator Johnny Perkins, take it away.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. Item one on the administrative session consent agenda is a renewal with consolidated supply for as-needed purchase of service brass valves. And our presenter is Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, Council. Item number one is a renewal of an existing value blanket with consolidated supply for annual purchases of service brass on an as-needed basis. It's a maximum one-year spend of $225,000. It is a three-year term, and it does represent a 25% increase from last year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Searle. Item two is a contract renewal with Two Rivers Terminal to supply approximately 65,000 gallons of liquid oxygen for the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility. Our presenter is Mr. Mike Cannon.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. I hope I'm not echoing. For rule, first of two, for a total contract amount of 65,000 gallons at $2.56 a gallon, if not to exceed 170,000. And that's for Two Rivers Terminal. And I would like to say that it's nitrate oxygen control, odor control, it's not liquid nitrogen. Be careful with that one. So, did we have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
Item three is a contract with Power City Electrical for pump motor control modifications at the Riverside Park Reclamation Facility. And our presenter is Mr. Fred Brown.
Good afternoon. Wastewater would like to purchase and install a variable speed pump controls for our filter screen spray wash pumps. This would be a contract with Power City Electric, the low bid, for the amount of just over 133,000. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Item four is a contract with Willis Towers Watson's Insurance for risk management broker services. And item five is a contract with Stuart A. Estes and the law firm of Keating, Buckley, and McCormick for outside counsel services. Both items will be presented by our city attorney, Mike Ormsby.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. The first contract is proposed with Willis Tower Watson. They have provided insurance brokerage services to the City of Spokane for the last 14 years. However, we did do an RFP this year, both to make sure that we were getting the full array of services and also to make sure we got a competitive price. We had a lengthy process, it was about four months, and we concluded that Willis Towers Watson does provide the array of services we need. And they committed to a three-year contract amount of $65,000 each year for this year, next year, and the year after. And we would recommend approval of the contract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay, the next proposed contract is the Third Amendment on a contract with Stu Estes and his firm from Seattle, who are defending us in a wrongful death, police shooting case. The case has really ramped up in the last couple of months because the cutoff for discovery is in two months, and the plaintiffs have noted as many as 10 or 12 depositions each month for the last month and for this coming month. And we also have some motions that we're bringing and some that we'll be responding to. So we wish to have enough capacity to be able to keep our council paid probably for the next four months. So we would recommend approval of this amendment to the contract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if any council member has any.
I'm just wondering, I think we have an executive session next week for some other matters. Maybe we could include a discussion on this since this case seems to be ramping up.
No, we'd be happy to do that, Council President. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Council President, would you like to have that discussion before the council votes on it?
So, next week, the consent agenda rules change. We're doing them at 6 o'clock, so it'll, it'll, we'll be fine.
Oh, okay, dumb question. All right.
Yeah, yeah, but thanks for asking.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Items six and seven are standard items on our agenda. Item six is reported the mayor pending claims and payments for parks and library. And item seven is city council meeting minutes. Both items will have the information filled out and completed for the council meeting on Monday, April 18. We do not have any boards and commission appointments for discussion this afternoon. Therefore, moving to the legislative agenda, resolutions, and final reading ordinances. The first resolution is setting a hearing before the City Council for the vacation of 26th Avenue from 8th Street to Scenic Boulevard. And our presenter is Mr. Eldon Brown.
Hannah Lee. And cheer again, okay. Oh, that's your, okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks. See if I can find the first one here. Okay, what we're talking about here is setting the hearing for the vacation of 26th Avenue and a section of Scenic Boulevard in the southwest part of town. Staff is not recommending approval of this. And here previously, we vacated 20, or Scenic Boulevard, from 27th on down to 29th. And that was with the understanding that we would keep 26th and 27th for access back over here to Assembly. I'll show another map here that kind of shows that. This is the map I'm talking about. This is 26th there, you can kind of see in yellow and green. And here, right now, we're intending that to actually be a route for sanitary sewer that serves that area in the southwest part of town. Plus, we would also like to keep that for access. And the goal is to try to actually get over to Assembly Street over here on the western side with a second access out of that Ranbuthorpe area. So we've talked to the applicant about this before. They actually submitted this vacation to us. And we just told them we were not going to support this because we really do need that as a second access of sorts. And not only for access, but also for utility service. But anyway, they insisted they wanted to have an actual hearing on that. So we're moving it forward. If the council actually does agree to vacate that, why, we do have some conditions set forth where they'd have to pay us X amount of dollars and things of that nature. But anyway, we're trying to set a hearing for 23rd of May on that, yeah.
So, I guess with those conditions, is the roadway still, if it was vacated, are, is it still able to be used for the intended purpose that you're talking about? Or no, would that just be a reduced use?
What it does is actually requires to get into an easement of some sort in there, would really kind of knock off our road access. We could do something with utilities, but we really don't want a public road on an easement. So that's kind of where we're at with that one.
And do we know what, do we know at all what the intention behind the vacation is? Why they want it vacated?
I truly don't know for sure. They have a lot of property in that area, and they're just trying to consolidate property for development purposes. But that just doesn't appear to be a good solution from our perspective as far as roads go and also for utility access.
So maybe a bigger question than today is intended to be about. But, I mean, if they do own a lot of property that they're aggregating, could there be a bigger conversation around maybe creating access somewhere else? And have there been any of those conversations?
Not so far. They really haven't come in with any type of proposal to us yet that we can even wrap our arms around on.
Theoretically, something like that could be possible.
Yeah, we would look at that. Yep.
And the previous vacation is on the same property as the property owner who's requesting this one?
Let me back up to that one we previously did. Previous one we did here, you can kind of see where the road stops on Scenic, it wrapped around and went around this way. We vacated that road with the idea we would keep 26th and 27th.
And does that same property owner own where the, where the road was previously vacated and this new area?
No, it's a different property owner. Yep. Any other questions on that one? You want me to do the second one while I'm up here on the, I got another one straight after.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance vacating the alley bordered by Riverside Avenue, Sprague Avenue, Helena Street, and Medelia Street. Mr. Brown.
And we had the hearing on this one, I think, back in January 4th of last year. And the applicants came through and actually completed all their conditions of that vacation. They paid us the money. They did the closure work as far as closing off the street accesses to Riverside and Sprague. They turned them into private accesses, or excuse me, to Medelia and the Riverside. So basically, they fulfilled all the conditions of that vacation, and we're just in here for final reading on that one. Any questions on that? Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon. Our final item for the Monday, April 18th, Advanced Agenda briefing is a resolution directing the planning services staff to conduct the sub-area planning process and environmental review in the South Logan area of the Logan neighborhood. Our presenter is Maran Murphy.
All right. Okay, good afternoon, council members. Maran Murphy with the Planning Department here. So I'm going to talk about the South Logan Transit Oriented Development Project. I did share about it at the PIES Committee on March 28th. So this will be a briefer overview, but did just want to go over it again one more time. So again, this project is funded through a grant from the Washington Department of Commerce that we received called the Transit Oriented Development Implementation Grant. And that grant is to help facilitate transit-oriented development in areas with high-frequency transit. We were one of 11 cities statewide to receive this grant. And before we jump into it, just, because it's kind of some new lingo that we're working into is the Transit Oriented Development, or called TOD for short, is a model that provides a mix of supportive land uses, housing destinations, and services near transit stations with safety and accessibility improvements for walking and biking. And we're also incorporating equity into the framework by integrating strategies around affordable housing and anti-displacement policies. So for the South Logan TOD project, we are building on a number of recent planning initiatives, one being, of course, the city line development that has been going on for a number of years, as well as the city's TOD framework study that is just wrapping up. And so from this, we're going to be narrowing down a little bit further and creating a sub-area plan and what's called a planned action environmental impact statement to help facilitate TOD that leverages investments in the city line with higher-density development, both residential and commercial within the South Logan area of the Logan neighborhood. So generally, this is a study area that we're going to be looking at, mostly focusing on three stations, three city line stations in this area. Two are on the Gonzaga campus, and then one up at Mission and Columbus. And generally, the study area will focus south of Mission. And so the focus with the sub-area plan and the planned action ordinance that are both going to be the outcomes of this project. So a sub-area plan is a type of long-range planning for a geographic area. And they help develop the overall framework for that area as well as specific goals and policies. And so adoption will likely result in changes to land use regulations through an ordinance. And the planned action, which is coupled with that, will be the city's first planned action. And that is a development project where the analysis of impacts and mitigation for the area associated with the sub-area plan is done in an earlier phase in the planning process. So we're doing the analysis at that project level, the overall study area that we're going to define a little bit more, but doing it at that project level instead of at the permit level. And here is just a high-level timeline. So we're still getting underway. As I shared last time, we're going to be hiring a consultant team to work alongside with us. And we're working through that process right now. And then we'll be moving on to finalizing the scope. One of their first deliverables is going to be a community engagement plan. And then we'll move into existing conditions. And our goal is to have the draft sub-area plan and the draft EIS by December or January. And then final adoption will be June 2023, which is stipulated in the funding from Commerce. So coming to you on Monday will be a sub-area resolution and public participation plan to initiate the sub-area planning process in accordance with our SMC. And the resolution will help communicate and establish the purpose of the sub-area plan and then initiate that planning process. And then, as I shared, the consultant will be doing a more in-depth community engagement plan. So the public participation plan that we have attached to that is pretty high-level, but we'll be fleshing that out quite a bit more and having opportunities throughout the process. So that is my overview. Any questions?
Maran, I just wonder if you, for laypeople like myself and others, what, we use the term "sub-area plan" a lot. But can you just describe what that is to non-planners? As opposed to other kinds of planning activities you're involved in?
Yeah, so the sub-area plan, which is going to be the focus of, of the, what we're working on, one of the focus is really looking at the overall goals and policies within a specific area. And it's tied to actual changes. A lot of the plans that we do might make guidance or recommendations like the Housing Action Plan. And that's adopted by resolution. But this, the sub-area plan usually is accompanied by adoption by ordinance, which then can amend the comprehensive plan or make those changes directly.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Was that lay-term enough? Yeah.
Just a thank you for the walking tour that we were able to do the other day. I think that was really helpful to kind of go out and visualize and talk through a lot of this, so thank you for that.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
All right, okay, that's the end of the briefing for the Advanced Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the Advanced Agenda as discussed today?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, nay? Any extensions? All right. Advanced Agenda is adopted. And now we're going to brief today's agenda, including the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council. Advanced Agenda, Monday, April 11, 2022. Consent agenda will start with item one. It's a renewal with transport equipment for as-needed purchase of air brakes. And item two will be briefed by the same individual, which is a rebuild of underbridge inspection truck by Aspen Aerials. And the presenter is Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon, City Council. Here's some echo. You all right?
You're, you're fine.
First one is a second of four value blanket renewals with transport equipment for the purchase of air brake parts. Yearly expenditure is expected to be 150,000. And the second item is a safety rebuild of the street department's underbridge inspection truck. This is required at 10, 10 years or 10,000 hours. Replaces or rebuilds all the critical moving parts on this big piece of equipment. Total cost is $403,034.04, including tax. Any questions on either of those?
No. Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Item three is a three-year master valve blanket order for miscellaneous stock steel, items 3A and 3B. And then item four, also to be briefed by the same individual, is a five-year interlocal agreement with Spokane County for detention services with the Geiger Work Crew. And our briefer is Thea Prince.
Good afternoon. The items I'm bringing before you today are master value blanket orders for miscellaneous stock steel for multiple departments within the city. We had two vendors respond to our bid, which are these two vendors. And awarding them both a value blanket allows flexibility for the city departments to best meet their needs. These will be three-year value blanket orders with a, with two one-year renewals. And we're looking at each of them at a estimated expenditure, annual expenditure of $200,000. Any questions on those?
No.
Okay, the next item is an work crew service agreement with Spokane County Detention Services. I brought this before City Council a month or two ago. And when it went to the county for signature, they determined they had sent me the wrong form. So I'm starting over again. So this is a five-year agreement with the Spokane County Detention Services Work Crew for multiple departments who have the need to access their work crew services. I guess that's all. Any questions on that?
Does that go out through RFP at all? Does that, is that involved in that process?
No, it does not because we have an agreement, we are allowed, since it's a government entity, to work with them without having to compete it. And they also then do not have to follow the prevailing wage laws. So if we were to compete it, we would have to follow all of the public works and prevailing wage laws. So, you know, I did talk with Councilmember, let me see here.
Senator Burke?
Cathcart about trying to see if we could kind of spread the wealth amongst, amongst some other of our, maybe nonprofits around. And, and I'm interested in talking about that. But I think the problem that we will find is that if we do put it out for RFP and we were to want to work with other entities, we would have to follow those public work laws, which I think is going to make it something that isn't very lucrative for any of them.
Thank you.
But I'm willing to sit and talk about that.
And Thea, Council President Beggs here. Just to be clear, the money that we're paying isn't going to the people doing the work. It's the people supervising them. Is that correct?
It goes to the county, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who the county gives it to, but it goes to the county, yes.
Okay, because my understanding is it's people who are inmates of Geiger or being supervised by them, and they don't get paid. They're working off their community service or something like that.
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Items, items five, six, and seven are various contracts or contract amendments for products and services at the Waste-to-Energy Facility. And here to brief all three of those is Chris Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, and good afternoon, council members. Today, I'm seeking approval for a value blanket amendment of $75,000 with air gas specialty products for the purchase of anhydrous ammonia for the Waste-to-Energy Facility. Anhydrous ammonia is used for air emission regulatory compliance. This amendment is due to increase raw material and transportation costs. The second item today is approval for a $25,000 amendment with night construction for mechanical repairs at the Waste-to-Energy Facility. This amendment is due to additional needed work at the facility as well as increased steel prices. And the final item today is a contract renewal with U.S. Electric Corporation for as-needed high-voltage electrical and technical support services. This is a one-year renewal for $299,000 plus tax. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Item eight is a consulting agreement with Osborne Consulting for Management Administration and Coordination of the Northeast Stormwater Study. And the briefer is Mark Pappage. Mark?
Good afternoon. Yeah, item eight is a consulting agreement with Osborne Consulting to complete a stormwater study in the northeast area of the city where we're starting to see some localized flooding. This study will determine the cause, cause of the failure of the infiltration facilities and then propose solutions to fix the problem. Contract cost $378,937. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pappage. Item nine is a master public works contract with Arrow Concrete and Asphalt Specialties for off-street parking lot repair and maintenance. And the briefer is Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, council members, council president. Dave Steele from Facilities here. This is a contract we've run multiple years. We took a couple off during COVID. But it's, it's something that you folks have set aside $200,000 for. We put it out, we get bid items specific to the types of work that we need for parking lots. And then we hit as many as we can over the summer with it. So lots of departments are excited to see us. We've got a slew of parks, parking lots on for this summer, and I believe a couple more fire stations, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Items 10, items 10 and 11. Item 10 is a bid for a cure-in-place pipe. Item 11 is a bid for Project Riverside Avenue, Monroe Street to Division Street. And here to brief both items 10 and 11 is Dan Bueller.
Good afternoon. As you just mentioned, item 10 is the proposed low-bid contract with Iron Horse LLC of Fairview, Oregon for the cure-in-place horse, the IPP 2020 project in the amount of $1.254 million. To which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project aligns approximately 14,000 linear feet of sewer pipe in various parts of town. The low bid from Iron Horse is approximately 273,000, or about 16% below the engineer's estimate. Three other bids are received, and the project is locally funded. And item 11 is a proposed low-bid contract with the DW Excavating of Davenport for the Riverside Avenue project in the amount of approximately $4.73 million, to which we also propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project grinds and overlays Riverside from Monroe to Division, including reconfiguration of the lanes from two each direction to one each direction with protected bike lanes, replaces the water main, installs curb bump outs at several locations, upgrades STA bus stops at several locations, and various other utility work. The low bid from DW is approximately 184,000, or about 4% below the engineer's estimate. One other bid was received. This project is also locally funded. Any questions?
Dan, could you, on the project 10, the Iron Horse, could you list the numbers again? Because I think the numbers in our packet are a little different, so. But maybe I just.
Yeah, 1.354 million.
Okay, that's, that's right. Okay, great. I just, I heard something different the first time around, but it's probably just me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Item 12, a report on the shelter operator in response to an issued RFP was discussed at the Public Safety and Community Health Meeting earlier this afternoon. And I believe Council President was moved to April 18th. But here to. But here to brief if needed further information is Eric Finch.
Yeah, I don't think we, but we need a formal motion to defer till April 18.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Oh, Councilmember Stratton? Maybe not.
I just made a motion to defer.
Oh, sorry, okay, we'll take yours first, and Councilmember Haskett got the second, I think. So, all right. All those in favor of deferring until April 18 indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred to the 18th. Continue on.
Thank you, Council President. Item 13, report of the mayor on pending claims and payments from previously approved obligations for parks and libraries, 13A and 13B. 13C is payroll claims of previously approved obligations. And item 14, City Council meeting minutes for March 21, 28, and March 31st.
All right, let's continue on, and then we'll come back and prove the consent agenda afterwards.
All right. The legislative agenda under special budget ordinances. Rick Giddings is here to discuss an action that arose from the creation of the Clean Fuel Infrastructure Reserve Plan. Mr. Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. This SBO basically just established as a budget line for our Clean Fuel Infrastructure Reserve Resolution that was adopted in February. The revenue is expected to be just over $264,000, and it will come from the collection of a per-gallon fuel surcharge on all city fuel purchases. Appropriation is expected to be the same amount, and will cover expenses related to citywide clean fuel infrastructure projects. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Our next ordinance is arising from the need to create a Director of Community Justice Services. And here to present is Amy Hart.
Good afternoon, thank you. The SBO here outlines changes in classification in our Community Justice Services Department, where we'll remove one classified supervisory probation officer position, decrease salary appropriations for two currently vacant Community Justice Coordinator positions by $7,500 each to total $15,000, and adding one exempt Director of Community Justice Services position and an increase in that associated salary. To provide just a really brief bit of history, before probation moved from under the executive branch to the umbrella of the court several years ago, the top-level position then, I believe Chief Probation Officer, was an exempt position. Recently, as part of the restructure of the probation department into the current Criminal Justice Services Department, we've seen some changes in other classifications in line with that new model. We also, as we continue to expand programs within the department, such as the pretrial services pilot program currently underway, it seems the most appropriate time to reestablish that exempt position in line with the responsibilities of that role. The economic impact of this in 2022 would be limited to the difference in salary between the current supervisory probation officer and Director of Community Justice Services position. We would be able to solve that with salary savings already existing in the court and CJF budgets for 2022. We would not be asking to fill that position in 2023 and would not request it in our budget. Any questions?
So, Amy, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but I'm wondering, so it says that we're eliminating one probation officer position. So do we have enough probation officers if we eliminate that? Are we still good to go in terms of our number of staff positions that we have?
Yes, so it's not an overall reduction in staffing. We're not really losing a position, but we're reclassifying a position. Our current supervisor would become the new Director of Community Justice Services.
Okay, so that individual then doesn't do day-to-day supervisory with parolees then? It's more supervisory office?
No, and as part of the restructuring, we've actually added a level of mid-level supervision with our community, I believe it's Community Justice Services. It's a lead officer, some sort of lead counselor.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Our next item under emergency ordinance is an ordinance that was also briefed at the Public Safety and Community Health earlier today, an interim zoning ordinance concerning the siding of emergency shelters. Here to brief on that is Mr. Eric Finch.
All right, Council President, Council members, thank you for the time again. And this is, again, for that interim ordinance so that we can site a congregate shelter within the heavy industrial use area. As previously briefed, it does require a kind of public input period, so this would be kind of for that first six months, and then we'd be able to kind of come back and do that renewal. The important part of this is, I think, as we look at the overall, you know, part of what we're trying to achieve here is, you know, when we've done a mapping of these facilities, again, you know, other areas, you know, there is never necessarily, you know, a good place necessarily, but this does become a siding when we use some of these industrial use areas that is away from schools and away from other, you know, kind of, you know, I think, family-oriented activities, which would be of additional advantage. The other part that I wanted to make sure that I clarified from the previous brief, you know, at Urban Experience, was, you know, there was just kind of a question on the RFP piece, and what I wanted to make sure we clarified is that for the NHHS and CHHS piece, when we do RFPs, all of those RFPs are evaluated by an independent board, either the CHHS Board's RFP Committee or the COC's Board Committee. And so the staff is involved, but the votes and recommendations come from those independent boards. So unless, if there's any specific questions about this interim zoning ordinance?
Just one quick question. Do you know when, so within six months, we have to have that public hearing, right? So do you know when it's currently planned that we would have that?
I think we're targeting in early May, but it has not been scheduled yet.
Okay, but it would be in the near term.
Yes.
We're not putting it out six months.
No.
So this does say here that it's setting a public hearing for May 9.
Oh, is that right?
Correct, yeah, that's the language there. I just know it hasn't been scheduled yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
So there was some discussion about deferring it, and I'm going to call on Councilmember Stratton, whose hand is raised.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to make a motion to defer this item. And I don't know if we want to defer it to the 18th when we discuss the RFP, or if we need longer, but I just don't feel that we have enough information right now, and we don't have plans or a contract, we don't know costs. And I'm also aware that the COC and the CHHS Board will be visiting the site, but they're not going until tomorrow. So I would just like some more time on this one.
Do you want, we talked about deferring it to, at least initially, to April 18, next Monday, so.
Okay.
No, I think that would.
So I would make a motion to defer this item to April 18.
I'll second. All right, Councilmember Haskett seconds it. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed nay?
Nay.
One nay, so, two, three, four ayes, one nay. It's deferred until April 18.
Can I ask, just one clarifying question? So if, what would be the latest that we could consider this, I guess? If, for some reason, it's not considered on the 18th, what would be that, or is the 18th kind of a drop-dead date?
I would ask that we do so no later than the end of April. So if we needed to go till the 25th, that would be okay.
The short answer, I think, also is that no one can start residing there in the shelter until it's done, essentially.
Correct.
Yeah.
I would just, yeah, encourage us to not push this off too far, because I know that we all share the urgency in helping to get people off the streets and into a place where, you know, we can better take care of people's needs. And so as quickly as possible, this should be something that we address.
All right, I think everyone's on that same page. And then that'll bring us to the next, go ahead and call it out, but it's probably going to be deferred as well.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Resolution's final reading ordinance is a resolution regarding establishing a year-long 20-mph speed limits on streets adjacent to certain parks. And Council President, I'll defer to you on that.
Yeah, so this came up on February 7 originally. It's the first resolution of the year, but we needed some more time to do some studies, and those aren't quite done. And so Councilmember Kinnear has requested that we defer it until May 2, but I would need a motion to do that.
I'll move that we defer 0001 to May 2.
Second.
All right, so moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed nay?
Aye.
Okay, then that is deferred. And now?
All right.
Next.
The next resolution is a change in the City Council's rules of procedure, adopting some various amendments. And our presenter is Hannah Lee Allers.
No, I'll do it.
Council President. Sorry.
Yeah, so we do this each year. We update. You would think that we would get the rules so perfect over the decades that we wouldn't have to, but there's always new people on the council and new considerations based on our experience. And so we're going to look at that tonight. We're going to allow public testimony. One of the big changes is we're going to, assuming it passes, move our consent agendas to the 6:00 PM and allow people to testify before we take the vote on it, so.
All right, thank you, Council President. Next up is an ordinance relating to traffic control device visibility and vegetation control along various roadways in the city. Our presenter is Inga Note.
Good afternoon. I do have a presentation ready for this evening's session. I guess, do you have any questions on the proposal?
No, I think you can just do it this evening, people are watching.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Inga.
Thank you, Ms. Note. And finally, Council President, our last item for Monday, April 11, under hearings, under H1AB, hearing on vacation of the alley between Sanson Avenue and Everett Avenue. And H1B, first reading ordinance vacating the alley between Sanson Avenue and Everett Avenue. And our presenter is Mr. Eldon Brown.
Yeah, this item is the vacation of an alley up in the northeast part of town between Freya and Sycamore, and also Sanson and Everett, east-west streets. We briefly talked about this one previously. This vacation is being proposed through the non-user statute, which basically means that it was planted between 1890 and 1904. And it was also unopened for a period of five years, this alley. And it was also not incorporated into a city for a period of five years. And those are the criteria that are involved as far as being applicable to the non-user statute. So that basically means we don't charge any money for the vacation of that alley. We have no city utilities in this alley, but I think we did have Comcast and Avista have some facilities in there, so we would recommend, if the vacation's approved, to retain easements for those two entities. We also would require some closure work at each end on both Freya and Sycamore to kind of close those alleys off to where they're private driveways as part of the closure requirements. So beyond that, and be happy to answer any questions. Those would be our recommendations, yeah.
If there are costs associated with closing those, does the applicant pay for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, basically, they build basically like a driveway of sorts to it and get rid of the curb return so it doesn't look like a public access any longer.
Any other questions? Thanks.
All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda, except just, I'll just note that there are two CHHS appointments on tonight's agenda as well. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda is approved. And Ms. Fissler, you can read the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, value blanket renewal two of four with transport equipment Spokane Valley, Washington, for as-needed purchase of air brake parts, $150,000. Number two, rebuild of underbridge inspection truck by Aspen Aerials Duluth, Minnesota as a safety requirement for the Fleet Services Department, $403,034.04 including tax. Number three, three-year master value blanket orders for miscellaneous stock steel with options for two one-year renewals with A, CDA metals Spokane, $600,000 or $200,000 annually including tax, and B, Haskin Steel Spokane, $600,000 or $200,000 annually including tax. Number four, five-year annual, excuse me, five-year interlocal agreement with Spokane County for detention services, Geiger Work Crew Services, $300,000. Updated previously approved by City Council on January 3, 2022. Number five, value blanket amendment with air gas specialty products incorporated Lawrenceville, Georgia for purchase of anhydrous ammonia for the waste energy facility through December 31, 2022. Additional costs, $75,000 plus tax due to rate increases as a result of current market conditions. Number six, contract amendment with night construction and supply incorporated Deer Park, Washington for mechanical repairs at the waste energy facility through March 31, 2022. Additional costs, $25,000. Total contract amount, $1,825,000. Number seven, contract renewal two of four with United States Electric Corporation Olympia, Washington for high-voltage electrical maintenance and technical support services at the waste energy facility from May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2023, $299,000 plus tax. Number eight, consultant agreement with Osborne Consulting Incorporated Spokane for management, administration, and coordination of the northeast stormwater study from April 1, 2022 through December 31, 2023, $378,937 excluding tax. Number nine, master public works contract with Arrow Concrete and Asphalt Specialties Incorporated Spokane Valley, Washington for on-call off-street parking lot repair and maintenance from April 17, 2022 through April 16, 2023, net to exceed $200,000. Number 10, low bid of Iron Horse LLC Fairview, Oregon for the Cure-In-Place pipe 2020 project, $1,354,009, and administrative reserve of $135,490, which is 10% of the contract price will be set aside. Number 11, low bid of DW Excavating Incorporated Davenport, Washington for Riverside Avenue Monroe Street to Division Street project, $4,734,010. An administrative reserve of $473,394.41, which is 10% of the contract price will be set aside. Item number 12 is deferred to April 18, 2022 agenda. Number 13, report of the mayor of pending a claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library, through March 25, 2022. Total $11,701,844.64 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $10,533,721.64. B, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through April 1, 2022. Total $2,705,163.53 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $2,534,252.44. C, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through April 2, 2022, $7,832,657.89. Item number 14, City Council meeting minutes for March 21, March 28, and March 31, 2022.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed nay?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, consent agenda is approved. We don't have an executive session, so we are done here. We adjourned until 6:00 PM legislative session.